So really, I think we can just jump into the RCMP report. Senator Alden, you can get up in the big of man.
Thank you very much. One thing I did during the last mayor council was try to bring members with me just to sort of introduce them, say hi, providing emotional support, I guess, if you will. So Kale, I think, Councilor Kale Delon, she's been here before, but probably years little ago. It's nice to put the face behind the people who do all the good work that's in these reports. So these are the individuals that are up there day and night, working time for the community and for me. So thanks again for showing up. She's one of our senior constables too, so she often acts as supervisor here also. Very important, the task force the size of ours is that wants to get supervision. This was December, December's report, you know, would love to highlight the proactive traffic enforcement. We had a very successful month, lot hours put in, lot of hard work by members such as Kale and everyone else at the detachment, you know, stopping approximately one hundred and two vehicles. You know, it's no small feat in a community the size of New York with the amount of officers I have. So that's in amongst all the other calls for service, right, where the members are doing that. You know, six charges for impaired driving. Sad to see people still drive impaired, but good, we took six off the road. Expression of busy season, lots of folks are in about day and night because it was the holiday season. So just because the holiday season's over doesn't mean we're not going to stop focusing on that. Obviously, there's less parties and less those types of things, but still a priority for us to make sure that we're actively trying to enhance our road safety when we can. The other thing I'd like to point out too is maybe it was because it was December. I'm not sure, but the forty-nine calls for service in relation to well-being checks and mental health. You know, obviously puts a huge, huge demand on the detachment. Those calls for service are not done quickly. Those are time consuming, as you guys can appreciate. You know, our good partners at the hospital here and others helping us with that, but definitely a big demand on the detachment, very important, but I did want to also highlight that as well. So open to obviously any questions, concerns that council might have.
Councilwoman, with the amount of I guess, deaths going on in town, we really appreciate all the checking here to be. There's a lot of them on the call for deaths going on and of overdoses, all drinking related things, so as much time as it takes, I just appreciate you checking in. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. We feel the community's struggles, obviously, day and night here, and we're happy to try to contribute whatever we can. So thank you, sir. Anybody else? Any comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a couple of people, the title of chief executive officer, was that it, or the director, seeing
Executive Director.
Executive Director, and I do apologize, she wrote down her name in a barely legible clear net. So it's in the voice.
Oh, Nan.
Nan, thank you. Next month, we will work on my last name.
Okay, okay.
Also, thank you for having us. Wanted to just do a little bit of an update on children first and how we're looking and where we are, and then I had a couple of questions, but most of them were just answered. So as far as our enrollment, we do have a healthy enrollment. We're just under a hundred children with most of the waitlist that we have is with the under group. And we're working on ways to get those families in as well. We are starting to prepare for some on-demand programming, which we received funding for, so that's an exciting time that most of the building will get outside and do the on-demand activities. We have also started to certify all of our staff, regardless if they work with the children directly or not, as part of the regulations that are coming down from ECME. We continue to have a steady flow of community members using the building. We have a regular which on language class in the gym. Every second Tuesday, I want to say, and abundance of children's birthday parties. And we have on Sunday afternoons dance lessons in there as well. A little bit, so now I'll talk a little bit about our funding. So we did receive from GPC funding for flooring, which I hope that we can continue to discuss. How that will look. I understand that there's somebody here that could probably help us as far as a project manager, maybe forgive me if that's not the right term. But to somebody who has a little bit more experience and knowledge on that aspect of the business side. One of the things that we're also working to do is, so when we added health and safety inspection, it was like four or five months ago, but now we got an extension because I've been working on getting some flooring upgrades and some cabinets done. But the kitchen also is in desperate need of some help. So maybe we can combine our brains and their funds and maybe put something towards the kitchen area as well. The washroom, the children's washroom is also working, and for that we can apply through ECME. They have a health and safety, health and safety funding available. Give or take roughly about ten thousand, which is available to us once a year. So if we apply for that once a year, hopefully we can take care of a washroom, a washroom a year. And again, just because of the disinfecting, the cleaning, the wiping that's needed in the entire building, the laminates, they're setting to peel off. And then the question posed by public health was because now the wood is the forest, the wood are open, I do the disinfecting properly. So the answer to that would be to reface it or get new cabinets in there. So now the questions after you guys that I would have is, who would we reach out to for that project management person that there's such a title? And how do we get a volunteer?
That would be our infrastructure department, and that was the gentleman that we were talking about who had come to look at the flooring. So his name is Daniel DeCombe, and he's in a meeting right now, but he will be in, we'll make sure that we make contact with that. And just so you are aware, as part of our budgeting process, we did talk about some funding for Children's First as well, as part of our interim budget. So he will certainly work with you on that. He does have the experience there. We also have within our infrastructure department some facilities maintainers who will also be able to contribute certainly that way. So you can expect by the end of this week, for sure, that Daniel will be in contact with you to discuss not only the flooring, but what other options you have to give you some insights as well. Okay?
Yes, so the Daniel is the answer for the second question. And then the last question is, when can we start? Maybe end of the week?
And that will be giving Daniel a chance to take a look at it, as well as our maintenance foreman, Scott. So taking a look at what can we do internally, what do we have to do in terms of ordering supplies and that type of thing. So it'll get you set up with the project as well as roles and responsibilities within the project, so he can talk to you about that as well.
Wonderful. Wonderful. With the military being in town over the next couple of months, we were thinking about getting our children out of the building. So I guess this is something maybe we can talk to Daniel about is doing majority of the project once. Because we would have to enter the building if it's a room by room process or everything that is hammered up in one shot. But that's something that we can maybe discuss a little bit later when closer to the dates. We do have four quotes from local contractors that we can also share with Daniel. He would probably know better questions to ask than what I asked. But we do have four quotes for the entire building.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Do any questions or comments?
So you, did you mention the military because they are willing to do like a project?
No, because they took over the complex for us. That was our plan to get the children in there. But because they will, the military will be using those facilities, then that's not no longer an option for us.
Understand that. Thank you.
Sorry, just I have a quick question. So as far as your budget goes, and is is the organization self-sufficient? Like, do you guys bring in enough capital to look after somebody's maintenance costs?
Yeah, we do. And then it's not a regular, we don't have, you know, a stash hidden somewhere. But we did put the word out and we did speak to a couple of our funders about what our plans were. And GPC did provide quite a bit of funding, which would cover minus one quote, which I think was way up there, but every other quote that we have, the funding is available.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, if there's any other questions or comments, I think I can let you go. Thank you for joining. Thank you, guys. Okay. I don't think there's anybody to hear from the public for questions or comments. I think going to your period other reason. So we can move past that. So our action items, which you're going to send out to us. There were the new works discussed of inter-agency meeting. I think Peter took the lead on this and in October and is continuing to revisit and film strike committee. I don't know if there's been anything else. Cindy?
He did discuss it at the community leadership meeting with both the indigenous governments and other agencies that were part of that meeting, and that's where they were discussing, certainly we have full support, it's just the terms of reference, who's going to be doing what. So that meeting was held in December, and once he gets back at the end of this month, he'll be striking another meeting to discuss it further and see what we can be doing to move forward collectively.
Thanks, Cindy. Any questions or comments on that item? Okay, so the next item is the NTPC, the Department of Energy, initiated intervention, and it looks like we have, the legal firm has initiated the intervention on our behalf. And we'll get updates as they arise.
So in checking with the legal firm, there's been no updates since December, when they made the initial intervention, and they're just waiting to hear that about that status. So once they get an update, we will get an update on that.
Third item is the pool, the reopening of the pool. Pool has successfully been opened, which is old, I think, the past one can't go on, but
Yeah, so the way that we do the action items is it's kind of a running tally, so it's been reopened, and then the initially, the last couple of lines are almost updated. So it's just a regular that way. We have some historical data.
Sure, okay. So as we knew before, the leakage is continuing to be monitored with nothing of noted concern. Regular schedule and schedule and programming will be implemented, or had been implemented now, I believe. And it appears that there's a few repairs to the liner holding and have eliminated the source of the major leak. And no major issues have been reported since.
That is correct, and kudos to the MSC team for initiating the rest of the programming. Having said that, now that the big pool is being addressed and is holding, they are also looking now at the hot tub, because that's the next question that people are asking. So looking at the repairs for that to get that up and running as well. So hopefully we'll have some good news within the next couple of weeks.
Right, so item number four, the drainage plan, review or impact on reliance. The director of infrastructure is reviewing and analyzing overall drainage planning and will incorporate the reliance intersection. And you have more on that?
So that is just a carryover from the last meeting. At this point, it's still under review, just taking and assessing what the snowball is this year and how that's going to impact. If anything to note, it's, he has noted that the reliance intersection, as noted by Councilor Mu, is going to be included in that drainage plan.
Okay, and finally, the boat launch, the initiate and proposal, two meetings have occurred. Proposal delivered in to active superintendent and structure prior to the December ninth deadline. Director Kono will provide an update on the status of the proposal when it's available.
Yes, it is. So he will provide that update during the infrastructure update coming up. And I will leave that to him to bring up. He wants to read this. Do you want me to go?
Sure, if you want to, go ahead.
So this is a follow-up from a development request from earlier on this, sorry, later last year in terms of the industrial road. We have a building that was moved onto a property, and the original request was for setback variances. And both the side and the rear setback variance, as well as a conditional use for caretaker suite. At the time, during our council meeting, council defeated that motion for the setback variances. It went back to our development officer, as well as the developer, the component, which Dawn, actually, if you want to come, in case anybody has any questions. Since that time, I took a look at some of the measurements and negotiating back and forth and making some inquiries regarding neighboring properties. And it was determined that the setbacks Dawn has agreed that he will move the building, so it will be in compliance with the setbacks. Meaning that there will be no variance requests for any of the setbacks. The building is going to be on the property legally compliant with the setbacks required. So the only request that is coming today is for that third one, which was the conditional use for caretaker suite. And in review with the development officer, there was no issues. This is something that other properties have in the industrial area have a caretaker suite as well. And other than that, the building is in compliance, it's going to be moved into compliance, and the request now is just for the conditional use for the caretaker suit. Everything else is in compliance.
Okay, I guess we, I need some discussion. Does anybody have questions for Dawn or comments? Dawn, you have any, oh, go ahead.
Did you get your letter of support from your rear guy there? Says rounds of January seventh, it doesn't matter anymore because it has its variants.
No, that's not required anymore because they've agreed rather than waiting for the letter of support, even though there was a verbal discussion, rather than waiting, they're just going to move the building into compliance.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
Kendall, sorry, Kendall, it's Alana here. I do have a question. I noticed on the diagram that's referred to as a crew house. So what's a crew house versus a caretaker suite? Because caretaker, to me, implies one person, whereas a crew house could be literally a crew.
Maybe this one's for Cindy. I don't know if she had the answer or not. We'll check here.
I think that was a mislabeled communication, so.
Yeah, it's just the language, language of it there. We have no intention of moving a crew in there per se. Was there intention to have somebody around? We actually, shortly, a few days after I left this we did have an attempted back at our property there. I know it's been suggested by others that we were going to do certain things with the property, which is not true. We have no intention of renting the property yet. We have no intention. The house is not big enough for a crew per se. No intention of maintaining people there on a full-time basis. We have business interests that result in perhaps drivers coming up and looking for temporary place to stay, so that we're hoping to have either someone there on occasion to keep an eye on the place when we have any valuables there, and then when they're not there, then we won't have anybody there.
Thanks, Dawn. That helped.
Yeah, Dawn, so that fuel tank, that's a pretty shady setup, though. That's going to be eliminated, something he said in the property, I assume.
Yeah, we, we know we're not in compliance for a permanent situation there. Right now, we were working on the building. Initially, we got a really good deal on the building. So we kind of went to work on it. We hadn't even decided if we were going to keep it there. We just were actually just trying to develop the building itself. So we put in a temporary fuel tank and a toyo temporarily. It's just purely a temporary set situation there. We were waiting on permits and whether or not we had to move the building or come into compliance in some other way, so the trades guys that are coming in and doing stuff for us there, they'll make application for whatever inspections, permits that are necessary. Like, it's not our intention to escape any compliance issue. That's why these questions about the the movement of the building and wherever, we want to comply with it, so we're not going to argue with people, we're not going to fight with people. So if the building needs to move, or move the building, or we feel that
Yeah.
plumbing, electrical. It'll all be in compliance, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Dawn. Any other questions, comments, Dylan? Dawn, you have anything else?
No, I just want to make sure, when I left the last meeting there, I was understanding that it was going to be posted, and then shortly, I think, four days later, I'm advised that there was a meeting that we weren't invited to, that there was, people had concerns and questions, and we're raising concerns and questions. And I just wanted to make sure we were available in case somebody has questions or concerns, we can answer them, rather than just people making statements at meetings and that we're not available, so.
Okay, well, I would suggest maybe you attend again on Wednesday when we board on this, if there's any other.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Okay, I think we're right, so move on to item nine, which you mean to, what to do at all?
No, these are simply third readings, so you would have reviewed them at the last meeting in December. So the corporate credit card, this is an annual bylaw that is done to allow us to reuse a network credit card. And again, this was all discussed at the December meeting, so this is simply a third reading.
Okay, thanks, Cindy. Like, say nine two is also a period reading, so that has been discussed already. That would be a Wednesday item. Same with nine three, another third reading on to acquire commissioner's land. And nine four will be first and second reading.
That is correct. So this is an annual bylaw that is done at the beginning of the year, and this has to do with the property tax assessment and auction. So, or sorry, this is the interim billing tax. Sorry, I was thinking auction, but we've already passed that. So this is the interim billing. So based on the interim budget that you had proposed and last year's taxation. Again, we don't have a final tax number yet until the final budget happens. So generally, what happens is annually, it is just fifty percent of the taxes are applied right now as an interim tax billing.
Yeah.
And then if there are any changes in June, when we go to the final budget, then it will be adjusted.
Okay, thank you for that information. I guess we should ask if anybody has any question or comments on those topics. And if not, then we can move along to item ten and the department updates. Anything else? Who wants to say it for corporate services?
Corporate services.
Okay, corporate services.
Yeah, thanks, Greg. Good evening, everyone. The update by corporate services. Considerable this, capital projects report, I distributed that on the table for every member of council. Twenty-three audited financial statements and twenty-five interim budgets. So the highlights are the twenty-three audited financial statements have been finalized and put finalized and put up on the website. As well as the interim projects, because finalized and also uploaded on the website. So I have the capital projects reports for twenty twenty-four. The highlight for that is the positive variance of eight point three million with two point one million. Out of that, that had not been projected for, out of that amount being voted for. Not by us spent. So two point one million is kind of being carried over to the new year. Qualitative updates, what we accomplished. Property assessment notices for the twenty twenty-five tax year have been mailed out to property owners using the town of New York. And in twenty twenty-five auction, the final listing on properties have also been sent to our lawyers and will be posted in the Gazette for the March auction. ICIP and ICIP report have been sent to Maka, and that is also being considered by them. Usually, we have that sent to them, we spend, and then we send them the report, and then they release the release forms to us based on their acceptance of our reports. Prostring of staff to take up responsibilities on that team members. It's ongoing, we've achieved, and it's ongoing. And then improvement of team members appreciation of how their work results in the overall financials. And the key GL codes. And their responsibility for that is an ongoing training process, which I need to continue to do. What's coming up? In the coming weeks, we'll be sending in our CPR reports, CPR CCDF reports. And then preparation of statistics standard report for twenty twenty-four. And then we'll commence the twenty twenty-four year-end preparation to meet the specific deadline for submitting our financial statements. Usually, it should be one twenty days after December thirty-first. Which we want to walk towards as much as possible. And also want to update our accounting software with the twenty twenty-five midterm budget figures. To be able to allow for variance analysis and all of that. Allow for variance analysis and all of that. That's all I've got. Can I take questions?
This is not ready to see it. Um, what do you mean by cross-training? Like, who's cross-training for what positions?
You don't have like. Four people occupy different roles, front desk. AR utilities, labs, and an AP.
So just cross-training within your. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, thank you. You got there pretty quick.
Good evening, everyone. Um, it's a quick update from Department of Interstate in brush country. Uh, so yeah, this doesn't usually get busy for us until the construction season. That's when it pretty much gets very interesting for my department, but. Um, but yes, we're still working along and carrying on most of our activities. So I'll just run down, um, run through a couple of those. Yeah?
Oh, sorry.
Uh, I think the start would be good news. Uh, so we did apply for. Funding towards the end of last year, just before the holidays, for a grant uh. To do some work on Wood Lake Trail, accessibility work on Wood Lake Trail, and we got approved. Uh, so we already have a cycle evaluation agreement and that has been sensitive finance. Uh, so yeah, once the season comes around. We'll hopefully commence that accessibility work um. At Wood Lake Trail there. So it's gonna include uh office increasing with adding guide ropes. Grants um and repairs to the current work in the area. Oh. Now it's working. Uh, and this is a project. So that has continued through the winter. I think that's pretty much the only project. I currently have that went side where work is currently going on and they are starting installing. The piles for the solar array, uh, and they're keep, gonna keep going pretty much till, till they're done. Water, C one utilities, we did get a couple calls then, November, December. Um, one was for frozen hydrants, which is the middle picture of that. And uh, the big one maybe was the frozen utility door. In the new residential area that we had just installed. Uh, so the team have been working through all of those issues. They fixed the hydrant at this time. Uh, the, we are still working on, we're still working on the frozen utility door in the residential area, so. The orange highlighted there is where we have the issue. Um. The original design from the engineers didn't indicate we're gonna have the issues we currently have. Uh, but we currently, we have those issues and we're working through them. Uh, so they have totally part of the line at this time. Uh, no water supply has been affected, but we do have requests now from those new modular units in the area for a supply. Which we are working through. They did send that request, I think, two weeks ago, the first week of work, actually. So uh, they, they do hope to have all this, they have utility that's connected to our system by Friday is what they told us. I don't think that's gonna happen, but uh, but we're working to make sure everybody there gets water supply and nothing but is going to be impacted. Uh, public works, the contractors are. Well, they're working on the snow clearing and sanding and all that. Common services that we render, uh, Sanders have, were busy and completed removing all the lights and. The Christmas lights are not gonna stop and have been pulled away now for the year. Hopefully, uh, well, we're looking to replace some of those, so hopefully we'll have a couple new ones for the next, for December. But obviously, we're probably still using some of the ones we took out. Twenty twenty-five planning. So right now, we're working on our processes and procedures. One of the big ones we're currently thinking about is the landfill. We're trying to automate the process there to make that system a little bit easy for both the. administrative staff that deals with all of the ticketing and the contractor as well. Uh, so we're still looking into that. We're beginning to schedule all our preventative maintenance for the sprinkler system, the fire alarm inspections. All that stuff. We're putting that together now and calling the contractors and scheduling those. Uh, and yeah.
Um, how close are we with the engineers on figuring out the actual issue with this pressure links? Like, where are they? Like, we've heard that they're working on it. When are we gonna hear something?
Well, I'm meeting with them on Wednesday to go through this. Uh, so it's, it's an ongoing conversation. Um.
They're aware how significant the issue is, right?
Yes, yes, and we have a couple of options they, that we are, a couple of options that we're reviewing and trying to figure out. So of course, like I said, one of them is the pump issue. We're already talking to the pump suppliers to see if we can up, up the size of the pumps we have there. Um, another one which is probably relocating the.
The water field.
The water field station to the, to the reservoir, um, because also we see a massive amount of draw when. People who are there to fill the tanks and to fill their tankers. Um, so yeah, the options are being reviewed and like I said, there was a, there's. A meeting on Wednesday to keep discussing this. Um, we're the plan to come up with a resolution pretty soon and.
Okay, so let's go. So then I'll just to clarify that for what's in utility line, this, it, it's an engineering issue? Are they taking responsibility for this?
So this, this is a little bit of uh. So the design model that was done at the, at the inception of the design did show we're gonna have flow in that system based on the draw we're gonna have. From the current existing houses in that area. Uh, but as he, as he just indicated to, after construction, we did find a pressure problem. So in an attempt to resolve the pressure issue, one of the things they have done is they trotted the valves. And that, that then created a flow issue. So we then had, in an attempt to resolve one problem, we created a second problem. So we had a little bit of, we had reduced flow through those lines and then obviously when it got too cold. Those pipes froze. Um, and we're working to resolve all of that. So it's, I wouldn't, so I wouldn't necessarily call it an engineering. Well, I guess the model and reality was different. That's pretty much it. So the model of design was different from what eventually. Came to be after the construction was done.
And how serious is the financial implication gonna be then and then?
So, so right now, with the frozen line we have there, we only have, oh, I shouldn't say only, but we have one expansion joints. And two. Hydrants that, that have potentially affected. Um, we have all of those parts available in town. This will be repaired, we'll be done. By our staff, uh, so. I haven't put a number to it, but in terms of the cost significance. It will be, we're utilizing what we already have. We're not gonna be going out there to buy something or looking for contractor or anything to come and do the work.
Okay, thank you.
And then again, so the damages isn't significant. You've got a couple of pieces of equipment that, that need to be replaced, but the mains themselves are intact. Like, we don't have issues with that. I still think, though, my own personal opinion, I think the engineering side of it, I think they should accept a little bit more responsibility than what. They are, like, this is some, this is their wheelhouse, right? They need to have a drop in pressure that's significant to force you guys to start throttling valves, divert stuff. And then put a big piece of infrastructure at risk. Doesn't seem to be, you know. There's much thought. I don't think it's put into it from their point, in my opinion. So I mean, and then that you, you know, maybe just talk to those guys more, so, why?
Yeah, and I think we couldn't also predict the schedule of developers, right? Like, the pressure we kept getting um was. Get the, get this done because we wanna put our buildings in and we're ready to move it. Pretty much was what we're getting from one of the big developers in there. And so all we're trying to do is work, get all that thing connected, get it all done so that they could move it. And they wanted us out of that property really.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so which we did and the contractor did, um, and they worked and built that based on the design they had, so. But we couldn't have predicted that they were not gonna get connected, that they were not gonna connect their utilities in the form, which was the impression they gave us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So obviously, with the fact that there's no demand on that line at this time, because the utility that hasn't been connected.
Absolutely.
We have water sitting there, there was no flow. But, so, there's a little bit of. Give and take, I think, but yes, but, but yes, we did have that pressure issue and that's what has led us here.
And you, and you, you told me that they've also added two extra bleeders, right?
Yes.
So there's two extra bleeders in there to solve that issue in the future.
And just, sorry, I, I said, no, the pressure issue, I don't really understand. I know there was a drop of pressure, but there was no. That line wasn't connected to anything, so why were we running a job of pressure with nothing, with no demand?
So as soon as that construction was done and we're connected to the existing system, so, so the, the. The new utility that was constructed is not in isolation, right? It's connected to the existing utilities on the other side of the road. They go under the road and all that stuff. So as soon as that whole system was connected. Our boost, we got the, the pressure from our booster, booster station went down to about thirty PSI. And as soon as that happens, our fire pump starts to come on.
Yeah.
Right, so we had a fire pump coming on, going on and off because of the pressure back and forth. And so then they started working to resolve that, so that the fire pump doesn't have to come on, because typically the fire pump should really come on. When we're having a draw, we're fighting fire. It was all, there's a significant pressure loss for some other reason, right?
Yeah.
So, which is how it's cascaded to the point of today now.
Yeah, so I understand that just the, the extra resistance on the new line, the actual flow would just drop that pressure that much without even a demand.
It was connected, we had reduced pressure, fire pop was coming in, yeah, very much.
And then, so once you have demand, the pressure will drop even more than.
Well, we're working through the solutions, like I said now, so hopefully between now and when. All of these houses will get connected or the other houses will get built, we'll have a solution that would uh, that won't have, that, so we wouldn't have that problem.
Right, thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Wayne?
Mine's not about the water, but about power poles. You got them on the front side of the houses. Is it not illegal for a power line to go over houses?
Uh, so do.
Because all of the power poles and tower behind the houses on every other new development. And on Carmichael East. It's an east or west?
West.
West is, they got them on the front of the road there, so they're gonna have to go over the houses or. To get to the back of the house for the power lines or.
So we did determine those locations. That was, that NCP, that's pretty much all NCPs we have. So they, all we did was. Well, we paid, we paid them for it, but they did the design, they are installing the poles, it's all their property payment, so. Uh, I would have to check with them, but for code, in terms of code requirements, though. For a building, yes, electric cables are over the housing. I have to look into it a little bit, but yes.
Only electrical over houses. In my mind, it's a safety issue, of course, but aesthetically, it looks, looks wrong. It's running in front of the.
If I can interrupt or intervene there, um, yeah, they won't allow. Forehead conductors to, to. Go over top of that. So when they, when they, when the electrical spec here. Gets the call for hookup and he sees, they probably wouldn't get to that point, but if he does, they won't allow the connection.
When it comes to putting in extra poles. And to the back, is that our responsibility now? Are we paying for it as a town?
I, I, I don't know, but in my experience, if there's a pole available. And you put a building in where your service doesn't match for the pole, then generally it's the owner's responsibility to get. To where your service is gonna be.
And the rest of the community is in the back, the utilvers. Following the utilvers, and aesthetically, it looks fine, dandy, shorter tower line, shorter everything, less risk. This is why I see them on the front there, and it makes no sense whatsoever. And they've got one side done and the other side isn't done. So the other side, we've done the same way, and we're gonna have power lines running all over places. And at whose cost with the extra poles and everything, is that going to be? It's not a new design, and if we let them freely. Make another right away, which they already have a right with the utility system, where are we going with this?
If I can just add some, originally, when the uh. Design of the utility door as well as the request for the power poles going in, we did ask for them to go behind the houses. NTPC, no, and sorry, NTPC, NTPC said. They did not want to do that design because the utility door itself and the work that. Um, in their experience, I can pull up the email, I can follow it up with you on Monday if you have any other questions, but we specifically asked that. And they said, no, they want to do it at the front of the houses.
But that's whose cost, though?
Yeah.
Yet the owner, the owner did just bought an expensive lots and okay to change their whole design from the front to the, from the rear to the front. There's a power hook and a pivot, an extra pole and to boost it to the rear. And what are they doing on the other side? Nothing's done on the other side, so we have time to fix. Half our sale, and we're selling these lots, we sold these lots. And now we've got this poles and this could be a big issue. Or it could, like, because if people already bought houses with their power at the back. Now they have to put a pole off to the side, so they're not hanging where their building is causing, well, issues with fires, give it breaks, right?
I think they can actually just relocate the.
The service.
The service, they just take the service from the back, run it underneath, pipe it and run the master.
I understand that, but whose cost is that when the owners are probably going off? Was off of what they, how every other of the lots designed in the new.
Well, I mean, the homeowner or the, the contractors would have known the design of the house and where the design of the service was placed. That's, that's generally, I mean, you look at that, and as a contractor, they would say, okay, we have to have this service wherever the pole is. So if they have to run that service line from the back to the front and drop it, that's on the expense, at the expense of the homeowner or.
And they're taking it into consideration.
And, yeah, I mean, they're not gonna flip the whole building around, um. And there's code that they have to be code compliant, so as long as they're code compliant, then that's all we can do.
That's the last thing I said. It looks like.
Do any other questions, comments?
Oh, yeah. I just thought you guys are still having a conversation with power poles. Um. The children's first building, did you, like, in our. On the meeting about budget, you were gonna look to see if you could find the contract or the agreement or whatever, who's responsible for these? Like, the um, the building, like, the maintaining of the building, did we find that?
Yes, we did find the lease agreement in terms of, so uh, looking at the lease agreement. The town is responsible for structural repairs. So anything like uh, the blinds that uh, you know, were in question over, over December. That is not structural, so that is up to them. Uh, you know, the, uh, another incident where there was um. Wire, uh, you know, the chicken wire underneath the, the house or sort of the building and the foundation. Uh, it looks like it had lifted up. That is not structural, so that wouldn't be us. So we are responsible as the building owner. For structural repairs. Uh, with regards to the um flooring, for instance. If it was something where the foundation was shifting and then seams of the flooring, then we would certainly help and assist with that. So we've now shared that with Children's First to understand, you know, so they have a better understanding of that as well. Uh, the other thing is that lease uh should have been up last year. And looking at it, there was some misunderstanding about what the payments were for. And where the lease was going to continue, so that's what our legal team right now, and they're talking to their lawyers in terms of what the lease is moving forward. So we are using an old lease in terms of who's responsible for what. So with regard to, for instance, the flooring could potentially be structural, and that's why we incorporated. The, into the budget, the repairs for that. The cabinets, in terms of the laminate, aren't necessarily structural, that's uh, that's more. Uh, cosmetic, right, or, or functional that way. Um, but Daniel may speak to that because he has been over to Children's First to discuss that with uh, with the executive director. In terms of. What we are responsible and what we aren't responsible for. So one, we have pulled up the lease, we have pulled up, uh, we finally found the original agreement. In terms of, and if you recall, because I think you were part of the uh, the fundraising for it, in terms of uh. The town taking out the loan to finish the building and then the repayment of that loan, and that's what they have been doing since that time. When they're making their monthly payments. So that loan, if I'm not mistaken, Stephen, is paid off this year. When they're making their monthly payments, so that loan, if I'm not mistaken, Stephen, is paid off this year. Now we enter a new lease in terms of, we still own the building, they were just paying off the loan, they, it wasn't like it was a rent to own, and I think that's where they misunderstood. Uh, the current executive director misunderstood, the payments were not a rent to own, it was just. Simply paying off the loan that the town had taken off. Or out, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago to adapt the building there, so. Without that historical data, there was some misunderstanding in terms of who's responsible for what, we've now pulled those uh. Documents together to actually try to make sense of where the loan is remaining. It's no longer uh, required in terms of those payments, and now we are entering into, what are we gonna do with the building now? So is, are they gonna continue to lease it and the town owns the building and have that discussion with them, and that's where the lawyers are talking about it right now.
Not proactive this.
Oh, yes, definitely before we entered into any kind of lease agreement.
Perfect, yeah. Um, so let's help them. Um, then the next one is, you said funding for Bootleg Trail approval for twenty, it was a good news story. Twenty-five percent of the budget, but you didn't mention the budget, and I looked through my papers and I don't recall ever having a budget for the Bootleg Trail.
Oh, did we have, or forty thousand or something, yes, so we have forty thousand approved for the budget. While we're doing the budget deliberation, and then they've approved an additional, it's issued in a, it's in the budget package, you can't tell projects.
Wait, I have a vote from, yeah, okay, forty?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I guess the additional, um, serious comment about our responsibility for the. Children's versus we're also responsible for the mechanical and electrical, um, in the, in that.
The bill, yeah, I I assume the building, but I remember doing the lease, so it was like the building. Well, everything to do with the building, if they broke a toilet, they had to fix it, if the toilet stopped working, it's your responsibility, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's on us, so, yeah, which is the massive one, I think that would do.
Which, I mean, floor peeling up, your responsibility, in my opinion, but who knows, we'll have to see.
Yeah, true, yeah, but the cabinets for sure is there, because that's more to do with their licensing. Licensing requirements, so have a commercial kitchen, you have to have this and that for health reasons and stuff like that, so. But that's, 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 they are licensing requirements for sure, and the drawing is the one that. Is a little bit of a gray area and we already carried a budget for that, so.
And we're talking about the kitchen, right?
Yes.
And we manage the kitchen maintenance at the M S R C?
At the M S R C.
Yeah, at the rec complex, do we manage the ki- kitchen maintenance, the concession?
Yeah, yeah, the concession.
Or do they?
Contractor operates and they're responsible for any damage or uh, failure of equipment.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
Sorry, I haven't been able to, um. In our earlier meetings in December, we were, while during budget season, we were looking at um, some funding proposals. Is there, is there been any movement on those proposals for the uh, repair?
For the water, the utility one, yes, uh. So yes, uh, it's the same engineers working with the utilities, um, helping us put that together. We've had meeting already, this year we had one meeting, uh, and we were currently, I was actually. In contact through uh, the S A O with um, Councilor Merrill. Looking for documentation that would use to support that submission, we haven't submitted it yet, so I'm just working through the application. Looking for any report on housing, because we have to tie our application to housing need. Um, in the community, so we're hoping to get a report that has been issued in the last little while here, uh, that we can tie that to, to help with the application.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, one other update, um, the boat launch.
Oh. The funding for that one was denied, I guess that's why I forgot about it, um. We funded this I F for that one was denied with the, I guess, they told us to reapply in the summer, they deemed it. A summer project and not a winter project, uh, so they told us to apply during the summer run of that same funding. Um, which we plan to do, I guess, well, of course, we already had um, arrangements in our budget to inform some of that. So we could probably start any of the preliminary work right now, uh, depending. When the summer iteration of that application goes through, and then we apply again.
The other thing, if we don't get the funding, then we are getting together again as that committee to identify what. Knowing that we have set money aside for that project, what is the priority for that project, but. That will be driven by the committee as well, uh, in terms of the users, uh, you know, is it the dock? We have a hundred thousand set aside, are we gonna do the dock, are we gonna do the tie-ups, is it gonna be some more earthworks, so. That priority setting uh, needs to happen, and there will be another meeting to talk about. If we get the funding, that's great, if not, what can we do with the money that we have now? And then make it a multi-year project, we can do it this year, and another hundred thousand, we'll meet next year.
Okay, anything else, Counselor Wayne?
Well, the children's first, have you had the discussions, like you were saying, you're discussing them, I'm gonna discuss more, but. They have nowhere to put the children in, in my mind, it's an essential service, you said that the hundred kids, you said?
Yeah.
That's, that's the hundred families that are working. So have you talked to them of any kind of plan to renovate, stay open, find a new place, how long it's gonna be, any kind of timelines?
Uh, so I, I. I did have that, uh, well, the question I'm having him at this point is a preliminary conversation, but it did come up, and I did say to him. Would have to phase the work somehow, because even the only major, I mean, we did two major things last year in that building, which was the boiler replacement and the door. The doors, the gym, the boiler replacement obviously didn't affect anything, but even the, just the door, so the gym, they rescheduled. At least about four times before we eventually got it done, simply because they are open all year round, pretty much, right? Uh, so it's, it's probably gonna be a little bit of a challenge, uh, but it's something we have to. Put into the planning, it's gonna have to be a phased job and mostly done over the weekend and maybe potentially evenings too. But I mean, we're not even there yet, so we're still having preliminary conversations at this point. But by the time it gets to the point where we have a contractor, we have a scope, and we know what exactly they're doing, that's a conversation we'd have to have with the contractor at the time, and. The, uh, there's the director of the building itself, and see how best we can fit this in.
Is there, is there any? Well, obviously summer's, the agenda's lighter, the kids are traveling holidays, so is there any thought of, can you make it through to summer to do all this, or?
To do all the work?
I mean, you can't find, plus, when the army's gone, maybe use. The center and. Path lowered or something, it just, it's just the essential service, I know lots of people that use it there, and I know, I know the other day they shut down another day for half a day and.
That, that's a, that's a very serious consideration, and like I said, we're only pretty much in various stages of this conversation. But it has, it's something that would have to be.
Is there anything you mean to do with W S C C and Health Canada to. Band-aid it to get through summer is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, that, yeah.
You know, and it's the last load of the summertime and people on holidays and stuff, but. Man, it's just a conversation to have and see what.
It's gonna be done later.
Yeah.
Because in the middle of winter, in February and March, that's, that's not optimal time at all to develop.
No, we're not, we're not starting in February, I'm not sure, yeah, we have anyone, there's a couple more kids, so. It's, it's gonna be a while, just considerations.
Uh, and just to clarify, we also promised your project management insights, you weren't here.
Oh.
Meeting, so, um, they're of the understanding that you're gonna be reaching out to them this week to discuss the project management and moving it forward.
Hundred percent.
Okay, anybody else for, like, who's been down? All right, thank you, Danny. And next, yours is Brian.
I have, well, I have some numbers, sorry, I have. Since I didn't do it, another update in December, November, I guess it was. Uh, I did some statistics for November and December, just to bring everybody up to speed as well, so. Um, so I'm gonna start, uh, well, not start, but we, we've started some new tracking for our statistics, um. We basically copied what we've been doing through the fire department for some time now, but with municipal enforcement as well. Um, so we just set up some new tracking statistics, new uh, forums and uh, easy, and it's within an app that we use actually. So the municipal enforcement office is gonna enter in pretty much every interaction that they have with the public, where, uh, providing customer services. So we actually just started this in November, um, so we have some pretty detailed statistics for municipal enforcement as well, it's fire now. Um, so within fire, uh, within every December request of service, it is, it is a low volume but high acuity. Um, we had quite a few, uh, relatively severe structure fires that we had to uh, uh, work with. Um, so resulted in some uh, significant reporting, uh, a lot of work with other allied agencies like the R S G P. Um, and we've, uh. Where we believe that has been a lot full of other, uh, fire prevention outside as well. Um, one of the responses ended up uh, resulting in a few orders that are under the Fire Prevention Act. Um, our commercial landlord in town to uh. Rectify some major, major safety concerns that we observed during that response. Um, they've been very compliant, um, they've met the requirements that we're looking for, uh, prior to the business holidays, actually. Um, so it really improved the overall resident safety in that building we built throughout the holiday, uh, we noticed a. Drop in responses that we, we typically get at a particular building as well. Uh, and there's a few other items where I did give them an extension in the end on it, um, just due to some logistics issues they ran into with the, I'm gonna tear it up. Um, we typically don't write orders on the Fire Prevention Act, that's usually done by fire, by the opposite of fire marshal, um, just due to. I guess, uh, staffing issues that they have, um, we don't have support on that side, um. So it's something that we only intervene when there's a major fire safety risk, uh, and we try not to get involved in the administrative side, because we don't necessarily want. We don't have capacity to take on additional administrative activities, um, that the G N D is responsible for as well. Um, so that's kind of our fire responses in a nutshell, to give you an idea, just what, with the little volume, we, we're eighteen responses already in January. Um, and so it's a wide range, uh, as well. Um, for municipal enforcement as well, the vast majority of our calls were for animal control, um, so again, we've. It takes a significant amount of municipal enforcement's time, um, but we've, again, uh, improved our processes on that side. So there's less staff interaction, um, we're able to, for instance, if there's a dog, we set in the streets, we're gonna get a photo of it right away. We have an automated process where I send an email to communications with a printed form, uh, that they can just post right up to the Facebook site. Um, it's been pretty successful, just uh, less time when you're inside, uh, and we actually keep the, the animals at the town office. Um, either within the, the protective services department, or we have a, we set a kennel in the back as well. Um, it just reduces staff interactions with it as well, because we don't have to pound back in bill of forms, create a customized. Notification and then back out when the owner arrives and so on and so on and so on, so really pretty efficient is on that side. Um, we've also uh, done a lot of proactive patrols as well, so uh, throughout the month, we're doing at least twenty-one throughout the uh, 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 community. Uh, there are some foot patrols to vehicle patrols, to working with our C and P on uh, traffic control and uh. Uh, uh, stops at checkpoints as well, so a couple of our uh, M E D staff accompanied our C and P during their. It was, it was good for them to get the uh, additional experience in traffic control and traffic enforcement with our C and P. Well, our C and P take on the administrative tasks, providing the tickets and the subsidies and everything, uh, things like that. Um, it's not a revenue driver for us to, so these are the, the administrative one level uh, tickets. Uh, we sent a significant amount of uh, staff time again in corps and dealing with something for this. Not necessarily revenue driver, it doesn't really have a major impact on public safety, so we like to cover the cost share of the public safety, yeah, kind of, since it's there. Are there any questions about the statistics we were? Excellent, we're called about eight, um, we did a lot of things during December, um, we assisted the uh, parts of our staff, whether municipal staff with the uh. Uh, Christmas parade, uh, that's always fun to do, um, we, we spent a lot of time just wrapping up our projects in general. Uh, I spent significant amount of time with budget development as well, obviously, um, well, working on that, just to make sure that we have what we need. Thank you for uh, the approvals in December, um. Kind of sneaking into January here, we obviously had a very successful summer festival this year, um, fire experience on the left. And then our uh, firefighter crews on the right, so we kind of divide up duties through this, municipal enforcement takes a part in this as well. Um, they're also firefighters, but they spend time doing, doing curb traffic control, ground management. Another thing to make sure that we're clear pathways for emergency vehicles throughout the summer festival as well. Uh, the bottom photo is our, uh, we, we, this is an annual program, so we have a willingness first aid as a standard for our, uh, for our firefighters, okay, I'm a firefighter. So uh, we have, uh, we developed an instructor cabinet within the department itself, so you don't have to hire outside, or take our outside instructors to come in and teach willingness first aid. Um, so we're assigned John, the, the bulk of the instruction on that, um, and uh. We have a kind of separate modular systems, so we can do remote first aid, uh, expanded willingness first aid if we want to, uh, incorporate other, uh. People who can't necessarily add all sessions as well, so it's been a pretty good uh, delivery of that program. Um, and just increasing the baseline, uh, capabilities as well, so. It's, yeah, that's pretty much November, December, uh, what we've been doing, but I'd like to know what we're willing to do next. Um, so we got lots upcoming, um, this has just been a nice month or two, um, so within training. Uh, that's actually where Daniel, I'm said to right now, uh, he's taking part in our emergency medical responder training. That's uh, we, we, we're funding that one through our uh, brand and news and higher rescue funding. Um, so we train our staff to the emergency medical responder, uh, level, so it's the first level, more physical, more professional response. Um, we have five new participants, we have seven. We're doing a V L S certification with this too, so we'll be finishing this up in the end of January, they've been working hard on this, it's a hundred twenty hour course. Um, they've, uh, they're doing Zoom sessions right now through our higher delivery program, and then we have that, uh, four ten hour days of uh, of in-person training as well at the end of the month. Um, we have finalized and uh, uh, basically registered all of our, our. Current personnel in twenty twenty-five for N F A ten professional verified program. Uh, we get in conjunction with the College of the Rockies, our instructors within the fire department do the instruction. Uh, the model we developed, we don't have to bring in outside evaluation to start that as well, because I don't take part in the instruction, I'm an approved A P evaluator instructor with College of the Rockies. So I'm gonna do the evaluation, but having to incur the additional expenses in the period, somebody up to do everything, I just don't deliver any of the training with it, so. Um, in objectivity. Um, uh, hmm, one of our captains, myself and John, our deputy chief, are, uh, we, we're doing a professional development program through the N F A ten twenty-one. Fire officer two program, we have our fire officer one, uh, it's just basically staying at the next level. Uh, giving us more capabilities from an administrative point of view, uh, this, this, this course is really focused on the administrative aspects of the. Fire service, uh, but it's a, a critical one to get them developed to just progress in, uh, the more expansion, uh, additional development. Which is we're gonna see as a town as well. Um, on the strategic side, um, we are updating both our municipal enforcement and I F D operating guidelines. Uh, he is senior for all officers from the fire department throughout the holidays, uh, we divided up, uh, some of the critical guidelines that he would like to review. And we spend decent amount of time doing that, we have a, a plan to uh, update everything, we're meeting this for next week to uh. Uh, expand on that, and within municipal enforcement, same things that I have amongst the staff. Um, we've been working on the emergency plan updates, a lot of stuff has been happening behind the ground on that, we've been doing a lot of consultation with E C C. With the, the hospital, uh, and other stakeholders, um, particularly from the operational side of this, to revamp our, our emergency plan. Make it responsive, align it with our wildland protection plan as well, uh, and just make it something modern based on the, what we've seen in other municipalities like Henry River and Yellonife. Jasper and other places that have had a real world experience. Leaned on them a lot, we've reached out to other counterparts, um, and we're gonna be, uh, expanding this even further by dealing with uh, kind of non-operational. Uh, partners with this, uh, and we're gonna plan to culminate this with a tabletop exercise, uh, to test out the plan. Um, in May, that's the, the general plan for that, we've also got a thing about my protection plan, and that's gonna result in our uh. Field treatment plan along with the capital project to improve the wildland urban interface, uh, protection. On the I T side, um, we, uh, have, we're, we're prioritizing our capital projects within this, so the first one we wanna do is the void inter, um. Void phone system, so we've been working, working with a couple of different vendors to determine, uh, what that's going to be. Uh, it's a significant budget savings from the previous systems, we've got it down, uh, it's, it's actually even less than I initially estimated in the budget. So that's looking really good on that, uh, it's gonna prove user access, uh, along with the, just the significant cost saving as well. We're, uh, embarking on the network upgrade as well, uh, we're prioritizing the locations at the M S C that didn't really get a lot of upgrades in the previous year. Um, just make sure that in session, the public facing side to improve their internet, we'll be working with Steve on implementation of his, uh, some new software, where the bear introducing as well. Uh, it's basically just to standardize, make a more robust system throughout the uh the municipal valley. On the capital project side, we started with our extractor dryer, we have quotes, we're about to finalize that and just start ordering uh to get that up. We uh have quotes for the snow machine as well. Um, and we're just finalizing bay improvements in our twenty twenty-four capital project as well, we had some parts that were delayed due to. I don't know, just kind of posters, whatever, but they're finally arriving, so we just uh been uh implementing those. Um, on the operations side, we're going to be uh really working on the hybrid access enforcement, uh we spent a lot of time communicating with the members of the public, uh just that our new hybrid access pass. And then listing with it, some people had some valid concerns, but we went out and visited their house, talked to them about it and re- re- reread and remapped a few of them. Uh, just made a lot of sense, so we like to do that, just find a good solution to it, so this is the way we're doing it, so. Some of them uh, we raised the top with the residents and they understood why we were not taking it, but it was a pretty good process to do that. Uh, we did a lot of proactive work on this one as well, just to make sure that we had some updates on our website, we asked, we thought about what would be. Probably asked of us, we put up a frequently asked questions on there as well, we think that that did a lot to. I mean, we'll eliminate a lot of the guesswork and the questions that we've received about it as well. Um, we're going to be doing some fire prevention act order follow up uh with that commercial landlord as well, just to ensure that they've uh finalized the the last little bits of what we want to do. Um, and then uh we have our apparatus airdrops, so we're running some issues with uh just some of our fire apparatus with the onboard compressors. On battery chargers, um so. We're doing uh compressed airdrops off of the uh uh our main compressor instead, so. We're working with a local contractor for that, we've uh uh had some piping and other ends filled for us and. Actually, a couple of different contractors on the the acquisition for the parts, and we'll be installing that over the next couple of weeks, so. Um, just makes a more reliable response system allows us to like get it there as soon as we need to, so. That's all I have for now, um. Any questions?
Wildland protection plan is up the fire starting. For the community.
And it actually.
Anything about the fire starting, the community, the budget we got for.
So our fire starting is separate, so what we're doing with that, we've got thought pergrates directly through fire smart, um we don't think we're going to need to do any big expenditures on this. We can be more cooperative with the E C C. Um, they have a pretty good one where it's a neighborhood champion program, um we've also got some additional certification through uh fire smart as well. Canada, so we're going to do home neighborhood assessments as well, and then the intention is for us to train other personnel on fire emergency too, so that they, what, we can visit. Entire neighborhood to communicate with the community, uh just to to work with them on that, so we have a few incentive programs that we're going to be implementing in the spring as well. Um, it's a big thing for us, obviously, and that ties right into our community goal for protection by too.
I just see all our utility systems and a lot of our places all grown in. Willows and trees everywhere.
Yeah.
And I see California burnt to the ground, I mean. We getting very, very hot summers and. It it just doesn't look good.
No, absolutely, it's it's one of the, the neighborhood champion program is a pretty good one as well, because they let someone take responsibility for their own properties as well, we provide them the tools, the education. Especially the assessments, because we can actually go to somebody's house, we can do the full assessment on it, under the fire smart banner as well, and say, this is what the recommendations that we think you need to do.
But a lot of this is our right away.
And that's what we're going to be, we're going to.
Same thing as right. Above our fire agents there, people, that's our right away, and are we. If we get more snow, are we planning to shovel a walkway to them, have them accessible? We've had some massive fires the last two years, and then in the summer, it's not bad, obviously, but the winter time comes and there's there's some of our fire agents that are.
So that has to, so that actually ties in with the hydrant accessory update we hit, because under the bylaw, there's a couple of new bylaws actually. Uh, as in some responsible for hydrant accessory on their property itself. So we actually went after in November and December, actually during the spring as well, we have to, every single hot fire agent we have, uh everything's implemented through our app. Uh, we've identified access routes, determine where where they go, basically left or right of the house. Um, for anything that's on the useful property on the right way, the town is responsible for it, so we've been coordinating with infrastructure and to ensure that those are going to be flooded. There are any major problems last year for the heavy snowfall, I wanted to avoid that right off the hop, so. Um, that's part of the enforcement side that we're going to be doing as well, is inspecting those over the next couple of weeks, uh just to maybe enforcement take part in that, because we're setting the bylaw as well. Uh, and we'll just be making sure that all homeowners understand their responsibilities, um and and when it's not their responsibility.
Certainly, for the whole area is responsible, that's pretty big.
Is it, it's under the bylaw.
Still pretty big.
Um, seniors are present, anyone who's exempt on the property, uh the uh the the property tax file, um they're also exempt from that, so. We compiled a separate list of that to be supplied to infrastructure so that they're able to uh uh use those and that will be the town's as long as they're. Yeah. And then bigger commercial landlords, um couldn't have the A G or the team, we've reached out to them proactively. We've moved that down last spring, uh just to let no one be coming up, just because we consider they need budget as well. Uh, to handle the additional snow, snow removal and uh brushing, unless they need to do it, so we can. We just anticipated some issues, like I said, it's a big thing, so.
Okay, thank you, Brian, uh any other questions, comments? All right, I think we can move on to.
Well, first off, uh some of you have seen throughout the holidays, uh some of you that I haven't, uh my first slide is a happy new year to all of you. Um, so that's an easy one. Um, what we've accomplished, uh we had our annual holiday parade December fourteenth. Um, town of Anubis uh staff Christmas party December sixth, and then we had our uh town of Anubis skating uh with Santa on the following day, December seventh. We had our annual uh light up the town and holiday decorating contest. Um, special thanks to Councilor Lemieux and Councilor Dave for being the judges this year. Uh, we also had a meet and greet with Santa December twenty-second, Ulaabie. Uh, some other Christmas events, uh the Ganav Christmas Craft Fair, uh December thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Uh, various community Christmas parties uh hosted at the complex. Through the month of December, uh we had a wedding, um a big wedding. Three days uh booking there, uh and there was also a goofy game night in partnership with uh Ink Hall. Um. I can't see the other part, I'm a part, could you move that icon please? Oh, there you go, uh we had fourteen private ice rentals over the Christmas break, um which. Is shockingly high, usually over the holidays, the arena is desolate, this year we had fourteen, so um really awesome. Um, also with arena bookings, um just recently, we've had uh two Golden Dark birthday rentals, um and then a couple other inquiries from. Uh, people, so those are growing in popularity as well. Um, picture from eighty-one images capturing the holiday parade this year, um. Some entries, home hardware, rocks, plumbing and heating, uh the I R C, Anubis Fire Department, uh Municipal Enforcement and the R C and P detachment. We had great weather too. Uh, just some pictures from the Golden Dark Skate, um from the Sunrise Festival, this was widely popular, um. People are just loving it, um. Easy Golden Dark skating, um we haven't had any incident reports or any accidents, so people have been a really respectful. Um, public skating, um trying to designate them into different designations of public skating, teen skating. Uh, and family skating has really helped um eliminate some of the wild child and um rampagesness, so. Um, it's been, it's been great. Um. More of my update here, uh bootcamp from September, December. September through December, uh we saw a hundred and ninety-five total participants attend bootcamp sessions, those are offered twice a week uh at the complex. Uh, the swimming pool uh has been free again, um for the month of January and also February, um we had some post-dated. Uh, checks that we had cashed uh last year, uh so we're honoring those ones into this year. Uh, and we're actively support, are sourcing more pool sponsorships to keep uh public swimming and all swimming free, other than instructor led. Uh, we've been in correspondence with the ultra Anubis, or sorry, the Arctic Ultra Race, um. Uh, just trying to find what kind of dynamics uh they're looking for and to host uh some type of event here in Anubis for participants. Uh, as mentioned, Golden Dark skates have been widely successful. Um, we've also extended operating hours at the library, now we're open uh eight P M, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, with some more programming coming to the library. Very soon. Thank you.
Any questions, Steve? I have a few, but you go ahead.
Actually, just came to me today, um is there a problem with the temperature in the pool? I was told that it's that it's cold in the pool, like. Like the air temperature, I'm just wondering if there was some serviceability, if there's something down or.
There's been a number of doors been worked on, so it could have been that doors were open, um but I haven't had any complaints. So many temperature, ambient uh climate come across my desk.
Okay, good, cool.
Um, yeah, a couple of things from me and Steve, um it was not only mine, but I think a lot of the uh like the councils. On their platform, that the rec center was a focus that we had to look after all the time, or look at it better. I'm just wondering, I've asked for the hot tub before. I haven't really got a solid answer about what is wrong with it and why do we do more of a urgency to get it fixed.
Uh, those parts that you're requiring about have been ordered, um there were supply issues and actually trying to identify what the root cause of the problem was, not just to. Just to say, oh, it's this thing, let's fix that, well, that wasn't the case, so we've actually identified what the root problem is and have gone to source those those. Fixes immediately, um so the chlorinator um for the hot tub has to feed off of its own one. Um, and we can't fill a lot of, well, we can't isolate the hot tub and fill it unless. Like, if the pool is full, we can fill the hot tub, but it won't have the right cor- the coronation bubbles, and we will fail public health inspection. They'll shut, they'll shut us down, the entire facility, um so we do have those parts on order and we're trying to get them sent up here as soon as possible.
Okay, and then um it's my other concerns, any other, I mean, there are other concerns, I see them personally, so use the the uh. The facility. But the lighting in the squash court, there's there's. I think it might be the only section of lights that have a mix converted to L E E, which are fine, but there are some lights that are that are out, um are failed. Um, my other concern is that. The gates again are being closed all the time, and they're not opening up that that area to the to the public. Um, like we, I think we had discussed that in all the meetings, I'm just wondering if you passed down any information to. The tracer to the right, the right coordinators or then to Scott or infrastructure, you know, to get these things looked after.
Uh, this is the first time hearing of the lighting, but I'll uh bring that up to infrastructure uh tomorrow and the gates. Uh, I'm not sure if it was just elapsed or um what, but uh it has, it has been communicated to staff that those are supposed to stay open while we are open. And they're to be closed at closing time.
Okay, thank you, any other questions for Steve?
I know that you mentioned when the pool was open that there was us like small leaks that were persistent, what's the update on the leak? Is it, is the flow rate the same? Are there any other new leaks in other areas, generally speaking? I know the report notes that you're you're comfortable with the leak, has it changed at all?
Uh, not to crack you, but there is no further leak in the pool.
It's been corrected.
To my best ability to answer that question, yes, and I'm. Of that, the leak has been eliminated.
All right, any other questions, comments for Steve? Right, thank you, Steve. Okay, um. Next on the list, the item eleven is some information items, thank you Cynthia for sitting down already. Oh, sorry, this S A O update, and after that, if you have any new information items, then usually Peter goes to the table, that'd be great, thanks.
So first of all, I'm going to start with the economic development and tourism update. Uh, Director Verri is on a well-deserved vacation right now, so I'm going to speak on her behalf. So just a brief update uh from Director Verri. The Christmas tree lighting in December was very successful, and that happened on December fourteenth, and while the Christmas parade came by. At the Chief Chin Cooley Park, the tree was lit up, thank you to Northland Industries and the construction, the Philippine Choir, as well as Mayor Clarkson for lighting up the tree. Next on the events list was the Sunrise Festival. And uh we welcome the sun in the community with the Anubis Sunrise Festival from January tenth to the twelfth. We saw more than four hundred people on the first night of the event. And the leftover food were uh from the feast and the traditional food and the country food were uh. Were brought to the warming shelter and the homeless shelters, so they as well could enjoy the festivities. There was more than twelve activities for all ages during the uh. Arctic market, there was twenty-two vendors with an average of five hundred sales uh dollars in sales per vendor. Uh, which was uh over, uh sorry, the sponsorship amount was over thirty percent, which was budgeted for. But the sponsorship that we were, we were given was actually thirty percent over what we anticipated, so we were quite happy to. See the sponsorship increasing, and we also had an additional three loom sponsors. Uh, thank you again to all of the town staff, councilors, mayor for your help and support, as well as our volunteers, contractors, partners, sponsors. And attendees for maintenance festival, a community uh event. Further to the work that the Economic Development and Tourism Department uh has been conducting. The newsletter, over a hundred and eighty copies of the original newsletter were distributed through town. The second edition came out on January sixth, and the next one will be in March. We also are planning our Anubis Guide, uh which is an annual guide that comes out for tourism. They are receiving more and more applications and would like to remind organizations and businesses that the deadline is January thirty-first. If you want to get into the Anubis Guide. And uh finally, one of the uh. Successes for this department was that after reviewing a request for proposal, the town of Anubis was selected by the. Tourism Industry Association of Canada to host their twenty twenty-five roundtable town halls meeting. So this is something that will certainly put Anubis on the map from a tourism perspective. This event hosted on April tenth will bring together tourism operators, stakeholders and key players from the region to discuss current industry challenges and opportunities. Foster collaboration and engage with uh the tourism industry's advocacy parents. Other than that. Does council have any questions that I will make up the answers for, because I will speak on behalf of Director Verri.
Thanks, so you can carry on with your report.
So to start with, my report I find is redundant, uh because I do a lot of. I do a lot of the background work, the support, the mentoring, the coaching for the other directors. So oftentimes, I find myself repeating them, uh it is their work that is done, I'm just the engine that moves them forward. So when I speak about these things, understand that a lot of the work is done by the staff, as well as the directors and managers for the departments. Uh, in terms of council work that we're doing, uh we've been in contact uh with Gordon McIntosh. For a strategic planning workshop, there's, there's two presenters that we had. That we had thought to bring up, um part of that discussion is going to be when you are available, so Jenna will be sending out an email. Looking at February or beginning of March for your first strategic planning session. Uh, the one that we are looking at, Gordon McIntosh, was actually the one who developed the original strategic planning chart. That you would have seen during your orientation, so it might be something to carry on. Uh, otherwise, we can also look at our other presenter to try something a little differently. Uh, I'll give you some options, but I will also give you some alternative dates that we can look at, uh again, they're setting in the direction. And uh you need to be comfortable with that strategic, strategic planning document. Uh, again, they're setting the direction and, uh, you need to be comfortable with that strategic, strategic planning document. In terms of the work that I've been doing with the directors and managers, uh, again, we are having monthly, actually bi-weekly meetings. Uh, just to ensure that we are moving the operations and the capital projects forward. Uh, we're providing support for the year-end activities, uh, this doesn't just fall on the Director of Corporate Services, although he does carry the bulk of the work. So we do identify other, uh, things and tasks that we can be doing to support that, uh, to make it a flow. Twenty twenty-four for us was definitely a year of learning for all of the directors, particularly with regard to the finances. A lot of lessons learned and we've identified, uh, some processes in place that we can move forward. And, uh, make this an easier, smoother transition, uh, into twenty twenty-five, so that's what we're hoping to look at for sure. Uh, again, general staffing supervision matters, uh. Keep starting some of the operational capital projects, part of that is some of the staffing changes that we had talked about. During the budget deliberations in terms of moving infrastructure and the maintainers from the M S C over. So we have had initial meetings, we've got, uh. Checklists identified more than just the M S C, of course, we, we want to ensure that the M S C is still being maintained. And, uh, custodians are still keeping care of that, but we are also looking at what other, uh, work can be done. Across the entire community, not just at the M S C, so initial work is being done that way. Hopefully you will see more things shoveled, more things, uh, cleaned up, a little bit more timely manner, uh, addressing some of the issues that way. In terms of some of the external con- consultations and committee work that we're doing. Uh, one of the things that we initiated last week was for the directors to start planning the committee meetings that they are responsible for. In terms of reporting to you, so you will have gotten some of those emails from Jenna, uh, I believe the Parks, Rec and Leisure, as well as Economic Development. Uh, that email has gone out, as well as the Public Works and Public Safety. Jenna and I are working on the Bylaw Review Committee as well as the, uh, Finance Committee now that, uh. Year end is done, Director Nicole, uh, sorry, Director. Odiosi and myself will be looking at that finance committee and will be moving forward, understanding that he does have. A hundred and twenty days to get the rest of our finances from twenty twenty-four in order. Uh, the other thing that I've just been doing is, uh, just addressing some of the, the requests and presentations. Uh, introductions to the town of Anubis, from our college and any other of the external stakeholders that require or request some of our involvement. Terms of planning, again, I identify the strategic planning that, that I hope to do in March with you. Uh, the other thing is the community plan, so the mayor and I have been discussing our existing community plan. Looking at what we can revise, uh, what type of engagement and public consultation do we want to revisit? Uh, part of that is the leadership council that the mayor has struck in terms of that, uh, talking about and engaging. Our leaders in the community a little bit more, so once the mayor returns in January, you'll hear that community plan, um. Being updated and more engagement that way, moving forward. Hopefully by the spring, we will have it back to the minister's office and have it moving forward. In terms of administration, uh, certainly land administration, uh, preparation for the tax auction. Development processing, our development officer is away right now, so we've taken on some of that, uh, some of those tasks for him. Financial approvals, legal matters, um, we're in contact with our lawyers at least twice, if not ten times a week. It just depends on what the Monday brings. Uh, contribution agreements, we're revisiting some of those annually for our annual review of those, as well as our leases, including children's first. Taking a look at the concession one, uh, as well as some of the land leases like C B C. Uh, and certainly ongoing business licensing and law theories, uh, that are coming up on a weekly basis. Other than that, that's really, again, I provide the support for the directors to do their job from the behind the scenes, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Cynthia. Okay. So. Council concerns, questions, comments? Yes.
There was someone hit on Main Street. Last week, was there?
I don't, I'm not sure.
What I'm getting at is we have a walkway just between two new place and King Minga Road. It's not lit up. And much like our Christmas lights that we hang up. We should maybe look into the summer town, getting lights that actually. I mean, I, I just. Heard someone got hit by a vehicle, but at the same time, walkways there, it's in front of King Minga there. And I don't see why we couldn't get power off, like we get power from the, the Christmas like season greeting lights. Um, we have to figure out a way to light it up, because it's dark out eight months of the year. And, uh, we should be lighting it up. People use it, the people that don't know about it, they, they're standing there, people drive by, right?
Sorry, can you clarify about, I heard Tunnick and then King Minga?
Well, King Minga is where the walkway goes across. But there's no power there, Tunnick Place, there's a power pole in the corner. Right, we can get power off, I don't know if we move the walkway to Tunnick. And go straight across to Northern Historic. Or if we run power and then pull over to the cross in King Minga. It's kind of hard, because you got a walkway that goes up King Minga around to Northern on the school side, and on the other side, you don't have a walkway in King Minga. But then you have, you have the pole at Tunnick there, so. Something we should look at.
Uh, yeah, I agree with you, I think this is probably something that the infrastructure committee can talk about, probably.
Oh, yes, for sure, I, I just, I heard someone got hit and I thought, oh, we got a walkway, but if it's not lit up, you know. And you're new to an Anubis, you wouldn't know it's there, plus the snow coverage is, yeah, so if we light it up, any walkways we install, we should light it up.
Thank you, um.
Something.
Yeah, we can, we can get to that. Any other comments, comments? Um, I just have a comment, uh, and I guess so. The, I don't know the process, this is a question for you, but we don't have any land anymore, like we sold all our land as far as them. And we're gonna need probably in the near future. Land for development, um, have we been in the process of acquiring more commissioners?
So that's part of our community plan as well, um, and, uh, there is still. Undeveloped land that we would consider looking at, uh, as well as acquiring any other commissioners' land around town. But that was part of the community plan, so if that process, if you've identified one. Uh, you know, let's start, look at developing, you know, the, the top end of Bompas and Wolverine, then as, as you would direct. Us to do, get that, uh, or identify if there's any commissioners' land around town that we could purchase. Uh, again, it depends on what type of zoning we're looking at, uh, as well as part of our community plan, what those zones are designated for. In terms of residential versus industrial versus rural or.
Yeah.
Uh, remote residential, for lack of a better way to describe it, so it, it really is dependent on our community plan. And where you're directing us to grow the nest.
Yeah, no, I understand, uh, just. The process itself, is it, how lengthy is it when we? So we're, we're gonna be approached here, and that's true, I mean, we all know we're gonna be approached, there's gonna be one, whatever happens. Beyond that, we, we're gonna discuss, but we're gonna be approached, there are more developers, there are more houses that they will, they're gonna wanna put up. And are we, are we gonna have the timeframe to do this?
Oh, it certainly wouldn't be twenty twenty-five if you were developing it, um, so to give an example, and again, uh, the way it was explained to me. In terms of developing, so the Carmichael subdivision, and you would know actually better than I would. When that land was cleared and developed, how long it had to sit in terms of settling, uh, what else we'd have to be doing. So if you wanted to start developing land that the town owns is a lot easier.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, identify where, where it is, and then we would have to then budget for clearing the land, drainage, uh, any of that development that way. So that would be at least a year out to be able to identify. The money and, and seek the money for that to develop. You know, I'm just looking at the math, that upper end of Bompas and, uh, Wolverine, but probably the Bompas area, I think, is less swampy. So there's that, in terms of the process for developing commissioners' land, we have to acquire the commissioners' land. So in my mind, we would identify what around the, uh, town of Anubis is still commissioners' land, uh, take steps to. Acquire it, so one, identify the land we want to acquire, and then two, apply for that. So that's part of, for instance, this one right here.
Yeah.
Uh, in terms of, it would have to go through a bylaw, which is three readings. To acquire the land, and then once we get the land, we can then determine how, how we want to develop that land. So I'm gonna send you a year out, if you want to start developing now, you need to tell us sooner than later.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that way we can actually plan for twenty twenty-six. Um, certainly through twenty twenty-five, I think we can acquire the land, identify the land, if it's commissioners' land, ident, uh. Identifying what land we want to acquire and then start taking steps to acquire that land, but in terms of the development of it. Uh, I would say it's at least a year, two years out.
Yeah, it was more of a question of how the, the commissioners' land, like how long it would take for us to acquire it.
Right, and that's simply, I mean, if you. If we identify the land, that would take us, you know, by the time we all get to, I'm, I'm just spitballing here. Uh, we'd be looking at, uh, getting a commit, committee together, identifying what the land is, I would say within a month, we could identify what the land is. And then knowing that we have to have three readings, it would be three readings to acquire the land, so that's another. Four weeks, another month, and then it again is dependent on now, once we make that application and it goes to the minister's office. And then it is the progress of the G N W T, we are then at their, uh, time schedule to get back to that.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not a super quick process, it's, it's.
Yeah, but that's in my mind how we would be doing it, of course, following our land administration bylaw as well, to make sure that we're being compliant with that.
Alright, thanks. Anything else from? The officers, directors? So, you can drink.
I was gonna make sure you bang that gavel. Have a good evening, everybody.